Like to call the meeting to order, please? I'll be reading the Sunshine Law Statement. Just like to call it the meeting to order, please. Adequate notice of the regular and executive meetings set four times, date and location, has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act on January 8, 2021, prominently posting a copy on the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is a public place reserved for such announcements, transmitting a copy of this notice to the record, The Wayne Today, tap into Wayne.net, the municipal clerk, and post it on the district website. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this point in the agenda, I'll be reading the official results of school board election. Board Secretary's office is in receipt of the certification from the Passaic County Clerk. And the three, the results and the three winning electors are as follows. Michael Fatale at 7,383 votes, which represents 17.89 percent. Second was Harold Lampos Prasakos, which came in at, excuse me, 5,848 votes, a percentage of 14.17 percent. And Yvette Wentic, 5,774 votes, at 13.99 percent. So at this point, I'd like to ask State Senator Carrato to come forward to swear in the three new board members. The first new trustee and their family and friends can also join her at the podium. And if our photographer could get ready, please feel free to call your family up and face the photographer in the audience. And if you'd like a mic, I'll be right there with the mic.
Please repeat after me.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Michael Fatale.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
United States.
United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Michael Fatale.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications.
The qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
Of member.
Of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
Am not disqualified.
And not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
Statute 19:.
Statute 19:.
4-1.
4-1.
Am not disqualified.
And not disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed.
Listed.
In NJSA.
In NJSA.
18A.
18A.
Colon.
Colon.
12-1.
12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Who's going to hold the Bible?
I think he is.
Hold it, all right.
Raise your left hand.
Raise your right hand. Everybody ready? Everybody ready? Everybody in?
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Harold Lampos Prasakos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Harold Lampos Prasakos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications.
The qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
Of member.
Of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Am not disqualified.
Am not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS19.
RS19.
Colon 4-1.
Colon 4-1.
Am not disqualified.
Am not disqualified.
Due to conviction.
Due to conviction.
Of a crime.
Of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in.
Listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
18A.
18A.
Colon.
Colon.
12-1.
12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you, is going to, yes, you want to hold the Bible?
Yes, you want to hold the Bible?
You're going to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. And repeat after me. Ready? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Yvette Wentic. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution. The Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the state of New Jersey. Of the state of New Jersey. And that I will bear. That I will bear, I will bear. True faith. True faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. To the same. To the same. And to the governments. And to the governments. Established. Established. In the United States. In the United States. And this state. In the, in this state. Under the authority. Under the authority. Of the people. Of the people. So help me God. So help me God. Aye. Aye. State your name. Yvette Wentic. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I possess. That I possess. The qualifications. The qualifications. Prescribed by law. Prescribed by law. For the office. For the office. Of member. Of member. Of a Board of Education. Of a Board of Education. Am not disqualified. I am not disqualified. As a voter. As a voter. Pursuant to. Pursuant to. RS19. RS19. Colon 4-1. Colon 4-1. Am not disqualified. I am not disqualified. Due to a conviction. Due to a conviction. Of a crime. Of a crime. Or offense. Or offense. Listed in. Listed in. NJSA. NJSA. 18A. 18A. Colon. Colon. 12-1. 12-1. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. Impartially. Impartially. And justly perform. And justly perform. All the duties. All the duties. Of that office. Of that office. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
I'll now call roll for the new board. Mr. Bubba.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Here.
Mr. Fatale.
Here.
Mrs. Kazan.
Here.
Mrs. Kumar.
Here.
Mr. Pavlak.
Here.
Mr. Prastikos.
Present.
Mr. Putt, Mrs. Putup.
Here.
And Mrs. Wentic.
Here.
At this point of the agenda, I'll be moving forward with the election of the president. Is there a nomination for the Board of President of the Wayne Township Board of Education? I open the floor.
Board Secretary? Would be my pleasure to nominate Suzanne Putup for president.
Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Secretary, I'll nominate Mr. Bubba.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, I close the floor to nominations, and we'll move to a vote. Please note that in front of you, in your, in your packet, you have a ballot, a written ballot for two positions. One is president, one is for vice president. If you could please cast your vote for the individual for nominee number one, which is, the motion was Mrs. Putup for president. If you can fill that out, and my assistant, Ms. Lydig, will be there to pick them up, and she'll also deliver at the same time another ballot for the, the second, and so, if so, we need them. Sorry, first vote is for Mrs. Putup. Okay, the second one is for Mr. Bubba. Unfortunately, we're supposed to be taking it one at a time. The resolution before the board is for Mrs. Putup. So right now, I guess we have to redo the vote, because all I need is yes or no. Yeah, that's.
I thought we could do them the other way.
You want to?
Why don't you?
Okay. All right, we'll go through the results, all right? All right.
See what you have.
Mr. Bubba is the second. Mrs. Putup. That's two for Mrs. Putup. Second, third is Mrs. Putup. Mr. Bubba, that's two. Mrs. Putup, that's four. Mrs. Putup is five. Mr. Bubba, three. And the last one is Mr. Bubba. So we have five votes in affirmative for Mrs. Putup, and Mr. Bubba has four. So the president is Mrs. Putup.
Next is nomination and election of Vice President. Do I have a nomination for Vice President, please? Oh. That helps. Secretary? Okay. I'm going to take motions.
Madam President, if I could, Mr. Fatale for Vice President.
Madam President.
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak for Vice President, please.
Thank you. Any other? Thank you.
And Mrs. Lydig will be around to pick up the ballots and tally. Just for clarification, we'll do it the same way we did the president's vote. Okay, I'll count the ballots. Mr. Pavlak. Mr. Fatale. Mr. Fatale. Mr. Fatale. Mr. Pavlak. Mr. Fatale. And Mr. Fatale. So that is five affirmative votes for Mr. Fatale as Vice President.
Thank you. And congratulations. Mr. Moffett, would you please proceed with any revisions to agenda?
We do not have a, any revisions to tonight's agenda.
Okay. Fine. Thank you. At this time, we are open to the public on agenda items only. So if anyone would like to come up and speak on agenda items.
Madam President, seeing nobody coming to the podium at this, oh, excuse me.
Well, first of all, I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Moffett, I'll move.
Mrs. Kazan, you're moving to open?
Open, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Duffy is seconding.
And Mr. Duffy seconds.
Ready? Okay. Sandy Prasakos, 28 Dartmouth Road in Wayne. Just wanted to say congratulations to all the newly elected board members, and I do hope we have a great year coming up. I hope everybody that's currently serving up is, is there for the right reasons, and hopefully we will have a much better year than we did previous years. I just have a quick question on your agenda item. There's a position, number 14, Gender Equity Officer. If you could just explain, what is the role of the Gender Equity Officer? And what does gender and equity mean in terms of, I guess, the context of this position for the Wayne School District?
Carla Fatale, 125 Bunker Hill Road, here in Wayne. It's been a long time that I've been up at this podium, but I just want to congratulate the new members of the Board of Education. Being a Wayne resident for many years, I know a lot of time and dedication goes into this position, and I have to say, Mike, as your mom, I'm very proud of you.
Seeing no one, Madam President, I move to close public portion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Public portion is closed. We have several agenda items. Would anyone like to move them as a whole, or do we have a motion on the floor for that?
Yes, I'll put a motion on the floor and move it's all.
Mr. Moffett, roll call.
Right, I have motion by Mr. Duffy, seconded by Mrs. Kumar. Call roll. Mr. Bubba.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan.
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar.
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak.
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Prasakos.
Abstain on item four, I guess.
And Mrs. Wentic.
Abstain on number four and yes on the others.
It's on the back of the agenda. It's the last page.
The last page. Oh, here we go. All right. I will be reading the district policy for board officers. I'm sorry, the Code of Ethics. Thank you. NJSA 18A 12-24 dot one. Code of Ethics for School Board Members. A school board member shall abide by the following Code of Ethics for School Board Members. A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State of Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Anyone pass it down? Everyone can read one, we'll pass it back. Thank you.
I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
I will confine my Board of Education's policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
D, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run.
I recognize that the authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan poli- political groups, to the use of schools for personal gain or the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, will needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties.
I will refer all complaints. I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. The next portion of the meeting is open to public comments. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the pub, of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover?
So moved.
Could I start now?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. First, I want to congratulate Mrs. Putup on being the president of the Board of Education. I want to congratulate Mr. Fatale on being the Vice President of the Board of Education. I want to congratulate Mrs. Wenick on being a new board member. I want to congratulate Mr. Prasakos on being a new board member, and Mr. Fatale on being a board member, new board member. I am happy to see a board that seems much, a new year that seems to have a bright, it seems like a bright light in here. It seems everyone's happy, everyone's getting along for the first meeting in a long time. I hope that this board, unlike last year, could work together as one board to get done what is right for the teachers and the students and the parents. And that is what everyone wanted. I hope that we can reach a common goal as a board, as a Board of Education and a public, because that is something we've struggled to do in the past year. It is now time that we can finally say that we have a completely trustworthy Board of Education, not just because of the three new members, because I am seeing members on this board acting very, very, very together with the new board, which I did not believe would happen. I believe, I thought it would be a lot different, but everyone seems to be getting along, which I'm very happy about, and I hope that we get done what has to get done. And although it appears that a DC trip for the eighth graders does not look good at all, I hope we could figure out some sort of trip for the eighth graders, whether it be a day trip or a night trip somewhere to give us a true eighth grade year. I am thankful for the superintendent continuing to clarify to the public, we are not going virtual unless, well, unless it is our last resort, because that's what it is. Thank you. I am glad that we are able to clear up so many things, and we have, and thank you for working so hard to keep our schools open.
Just going to raise this a little bit. Calvin O'Quogo, residing in Livingston, New Jersey. I just wanted to semi-congratulations to all the board members, especially you, Harry, and may, may God continue to guide you in a special way, and for each of the other board members, too, may your judgment be in the best interest of the students, and send them my best of luck as you all embark on this journey. Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, Madam President, move to close.
Second.
The public portion is closed. Thank you.
If I may, Madam President? If I could just remind the board that they have information in front of them for committee assignments and if they want to fill it out and leave it with you before they leave today, that'd be appreciative, but we'd like to organize the committee structure as soon as possible.
Mrs. Putup? In the last section, I was supposed to respond to the one question we have from the public. If that's okay? So the question was from Mrs. Prasakos regarding a gender equity officer and what that position entails. So in every school, there's a potential that someone makes a claim of discrimination, okay? And so there's different ways that that happens. But a gender equity officer would be in charge of evaluating either a complaint to the district about a gender issue. A gender equity officer would be involved in examining issues where there is inequity. So for example, a few years ago, there was a situation where the, at Wayne Valley High School, where the boys' baseball team had a very different set of facilities and then the girls' softball team, an equivalent team, had to travel every day for practice to another park for their practices. So that issue was resolved with the construction of the new softball field. So those are the types of things a gender equity officer could deal with a whole variety of issues, but all with the idea that discrimination is illegal and the gender equity officer would find ways to make sure the district is compliant. So it's a required position, it's mandated by law, and every district has one.
Okay. Board member comments. Mrs. Kazan?
Thank you, Madam President. Want to congratulate our three new board members on being sworn in this evening. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. And I would also like to congratulate you, Madam President, on your new position and you, Mr. Fatale, as our new vice president. I'm looking forward to a very productive end of the year. We're only halfway through this year, so we're not really starting a new one. This is a continuation. A lot is in the pipeline. We'll explain all of that to the new board members and I expect us to work together quite well. I'm looking forward to getting back to work and seeing you all a week from now at your first official board meeting. Thank you.
Madam President, if I could?
Mr. Duffy?
Congratulations on being sworn in as the president. I know that you do a fine job, having worked with you for many years.
Thank you.
Second of all, I'd like to congratulate our three new board members. I look forward to working with all of you. I know that there's some issues out there and we'll have to work together to accomplish them. That being said, make sure that you fill out your W2s and hand them over to Mr. Moffett so that you have everything in order for your first paycheck. Thank you very much.
First of all, Mrs. Putup, congratulations, well deserved. Secondly, to our new board members, welcome. Put the seatbelt on because the roller coaster's coming next Thursday night, or tonight, as soon as you start getting the emails, which won't end. And, you know, we start out a new year. And the nice thing about starting out a new year, it's like starting out a new year as a teacher. It's a blank easel for you to draw and you to write. The page in the book is blank. You write the page. You don't write the book. You write the page, you write the chapter. That's what I'm looking forward to with this new board. It's time to start writing the new page and writing the chapter. We have to come together as a community. And what's happened has happened. We can't, we can't stay there because if we stay there, we're never going to move forward. It's time for all of us to start, to come together. And let's take us to the place where we want to be and where we are, as one of the best school districts in the state of New Jersey. The best school district. And we get there by working together, by working together as, with parents, by working together as a community. We come together. And that's how we accomplish things. We don't accomplish things with yelling and screaming and talking down people. We don't do that. Everybody has a passion. Passion is great. Passion is what drives each and every one of us. But we need to come together and find the common ground. There is common ground. I don't care how, how you feel, there is a common ground. And we have to get there, one for our kids, is why we're all here, why you're all here. Because if you weren't here for your kids, you wouldn't be sitting out here tonight, not one of you. And we wouldn't be sitting up here if we weren't concerned about each and every child in Wayne. It's time to move forward. And this is the new page. It's the blank page. And we're going to start writing that chapter tonight. Thank you.
I really just want to say congratulations to everyone and hopefully we're looking forward to new year where we can work together, but really at the end of the day, thinking of this as hopefully a reset point and moving forward in that way and really thinking and learning based upon data and other things as far as what's educationally sound for our students and for the whole community. Thank you. Hi. I just wanted to say congratulations to our new elected president and vice president. I am overwhelmed with gratitude to have been elected to sit on the Wayne Board of Education and I would like to thank all the parents and the taxpayers who put me here. I really appreciate all your support. Thank you, Senator Carrato, for coming here and being with us today and swearing us in. I am happy to serve on this board with one goal in mind, one goal in mind, which is our children. I look forward to working with the board members, the administration, and all the parents and educators to do the best what's for our children. So thank you and thank you for being here tonight.
I just want to wish everyone a happy new year and I wanted to thank everyone for entrusting me, the 5,848 people for entrusting me to sit on this board, but also to all the stakeholders in Wayne, all the taxpayers, all the residents, the children, the teachers. I'm here to represent you. So even though some of you didn't vote for me, I'm here to represent you. I want to thank the honorable Senator Kristen Carrato for making it out tonight and swearing us all in and congratulations to everyone.
Madam President, congratulations. I'm the role of president. Senator Carrato, thank you for coming down, taking time out of your schedule. I want to thank everybody for coming out, supporting. Really want to thank my wife for holding on during this roller coaster ride and putting up with me these past couple months. I know you're ready, not too happy with me at times, but thank you, babe. I appreciate it. And to the board, I look forward to working with each and every one of you and turning this page and bridging the gap. And please bear with me during my learning curve as I progress forward. Thank you.
I do want to welcome all the new board members. Congratulations on your vice presidential seat, Mr. Fatale. I know it's going to be a wonderful and productive year and we have a great administration. We have wonderful teachers and parents and administrative staff and bus drivers. And if I forgot anybody, I apologize, but a great staff here at Wayne Public Schools. And the most important thing, of course, are children and their families. And every day, we try to do better and move our students forward. And I want to thank the citizens of Wayne for their votes, for believing in us, for paying your taxes to keep our schools going, and I expect great things in the future. So on that note, I wish you a happy and prosperous new year and a healthy one. Thank you very much.
Almuth?
With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.